Just. Okay. So can I just ask a quick question before we dive into these things, which is? The it seems like the basis of the rescinding of several policies that they've all been incorporated in IK. But we didn't have IK in our agenda. So is there a reason for that or probably an oversight?
Okay. Um. We could hold off on the re rescinding. Um. Until next month, if that's. Helpful, I mean, at least you would know what's being rescinded in this meeting. Um, and we were put IK in for the September meeting.
Okay, so we because we have to, we'll have to um. Prove it IK to take the place of all the others.
That's right.
So yeah, I think that probably makes sense.
Yeah.
I actually looked for it and I think I'm fine with it, so then I was really confused. But I'm sorry, I didn't get to ask that earlier.
No, that's fine.
Um, so. Uh, so is IK? It's a new one altogether, or it's just they're all everything's being.
IK has driven revamp and. I guess expanded.
Yeah.
To incorporate a lot of these.
Yeah.
And if you look at the memo, um, as I usually do, I try to incorporate all the information that. Folks need.
Mm hmm.
Um.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Yeah, with IK being. Completely new pile change. And you're gonna hear a lot about the three oh six rules. And what the three oh six rules are is a set of. Rules or ordinances um that Concord. Puts in place that basically establishes what the minimum standards are for public schools to operate.
Mm hmm.
There was a huge revamp of the three oh sixes over the last, I would say, two to three years.
Mm hmm.
And those were finally all adopted and at the top of my memo, I've linked in there part one and part two, and these are the new. Um, all the revisions, all the edits, everything is new in there.
Yeah.
So you can see what it is as it stands and all of these policies that are in that memo. That refer to the three oh sixes are somehow tied to updates, changes, deletions. That were made in the overall rules, so now we've got to. Update all the policies that somehow lean on the three oh sixes.
Mm hmm.
To reflect that. Um, and what you have here, the two in red are two new, brand new policies that we do not have.
Mm hmm.
Um, as a result of three oh six changes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So yes, I think if we if we postpone the. C, D, E, and F on our agenda.
Okay.
Nice, but yay. But I I um. If we have a chance to look at it, then we can decide if those things, if it feels like those are all incorporated well enough to sufficiently.
Yep.
Well, the other thing is, I mean. In the memo, it says that IK has been completely replaced. But we haven't done yet, yet.
No, that's right, I'm gonna be putting on my sitting over there. There's a packet there. It's the next meeting, Nancy. Ballots at the table, so.
Good, how are you?
Good.
Um, we were just talking about the fact that we, there are several policies on the agenda that are to be rescinded, except that we don't have the policy that's taking their place on our agenda, so. We're gonna hold off on those until next time, so we can review that policy eventually. Hopefully, the sign of one of them.
And we, yeah, it seems like in some sequence, we'd wanna like approve that policy before you send me out of.
I think that's true. Which we could do at one meeting, as long as it gets approved.
Yeah, yeah, let me do IK first. As long as IK three.
Exactly.
Go through, yeah.
Okay.
I'm like, oh yeah.
Okay. And. Patty was explaining that the three oh six rules, the minimum standards have been. Drew down significantly over the past few years, and so most of these now. Have something to do with that, have been changed because of that. I think this thing.
I don't know what's the emergency. What was going on?
Um, so is that state law that changed all that six oh three?
So the six oh three, there, I mean, it's rules for. Public school approval and minimum requirements, so they made a huge, huge revamp of that. And we have so many policies that are dependent on those three oh six rules. That you're gonna start to see a lot of things either getting updated, or we're gonna be tossing a bunch, or we're gonna be putting in new ones like the two that are on the agenda in red today. Because of all the changes that they've made to the three oh sixes. So this is like, it's like that whole memo that I put in there, this was the spring update that came out in May. Um, had tons of stuff tied to the three oh sixes.
Mm hmm.
Um, so that's, we're gonna be up to our eyebrows in three oh six and the next few meetings.
Oh, so you're saying that A is a new, brand new policy?
Yeah, IKFG is brand new. And as a result of this three oh sixes. Um, and just looking at my memo, this is retitled, revised, again, lines up with three oh sixes. The the change to this now is that all grade levels are expected to explore career pathways in a developmentally appropriate manner. No later than this school year. Um, so this policy goes through. And lays out how that could happen at each grade level, and there are some decisions that the committee would need to make about. What the grade levels would be, what that would look like. Um, but the expectation is that all students K twelve have some kind of career exploration. Kindergarten, first grade, as they talk about it, could, you're looking at career awareness, who are the. Postal carriers, who are the firefighters, like, what are these different jobs that people are doing? And as you get into middle school, you start looking at, okay, what are you interested in? Well, I'm really interested in. Writing, okay, well, where could writing be used as a career, or where could art be used as a career, so students can start to fi- figure out, you know, this is what I'm good at, how can I use it? And then high school, which we've already got these things in program, is the CTE, um, dual enrollment. Extended learning opportunities, which are ELOs, where they'll go out and they'll do internships and things. So it's all developmentally appropriate, but it's expected now to happen K twelve, and we're not just leaving it to, okay, it's high school, what do you wanna do with your life? So that students start thinking about this early on.
We sort of do that already. High school, they had to take a survey of what they thought they would like to do, and it would tell them, maybe you should be a nurse, maybe you should be a engineer, you know? And I thought that we've already, that what we periodically, we do.
El- elementary for years has been looking at, okay, well, we're going to the zoo, look what the zookeeper does, look what they, you know, what are they doing here to prepare the, all these things? So I think. We've always done this, but this is really just establishing it as an expectation instead of hoping it happens along the way.
Yeah. It does seem a little odd to be a policy.
I know.
For requirements, so. But it doesn't seem like it would hurt, so. Um, so presumably, we just need to make those grade levels match our system.
Yep.
So elementary would be K through five. Um, middle school would be six through eight, and then high school, it's already established. And then section B in the policy, we would need to keep because we have a high school in the district. And then section C, we need to think about. If the superintendent, on their own or with other. Staff would develop procedures. For establishing criteria.
Like the director of curriculum.
Yes.
How about the the principals too, would you say director of curriculum in?
Well, you could say school administrators, just keep it broad, because you don't wanna box out the CTE director.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. Those kinds of, and then like even the ELO coordinator is somebody who would wanna be involved in things like that, so we could say school administration.
Would you wanna do board designate? Because then it allows him to decide who that group is gonna be.
Yeah.
Without having to change the policy.
Yeah.
So are you saying the superintendent or designate?
Yes, yeah.
Coordination and school administration.
Yeah. And you said administration rather than administrators?
I think that that. I need to adjust a little bit.
So you said, well, I thought you said this was brand new, but it looks like it's just like you said it was significantly.
It's brand new to us, we don't have this, so it's brand new to us. Because now it's required and before I believe it was recommended, I see. Okay, um, we don't have this, so.
Yeah, we just recommended for the high school, which we kind of already did anyway. And now it's required. Yeah.
I just thought it's something, did you see in U S World of News, what what's in the high school was number twelve? Last year, we were number fifteen, now we're number twelve. Yes, I don't know why it's near us, I just saw it a day or two ago. I didn't even see it before, it just came into my head.
Two readings?
Oh. Oh, I think so. Um. I had a few comments about the fact that we tried to, that we pushed some policies through in one reading. Um, so I think we should be careful about trying to do that in the future, but. Uh, so yes, I'm in support of two readings personally.
Didn't we say we were gonna do that though?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, if I remember correctly.
We did, we suspended the rules.
But I, it's nice to do two readings since they're one.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I know we were trying to jam things into the. Yeah, memo and stuff, so that's why I did it, but.
Yeah, two readings is one of the board rules, right?
Mm hmm.
Which is why they decided.
So the first reading will, I'll actually sneak it on for September nine.
Perfect, great.
Something was making it on if I'm announced. I'm at, yeah, September nine.
Be open last time.
Okay, such a L I A. This is the same situation as new to us.
Yep, required. Um, the three oh six. Appendage.
Mm hmm.
Um, they changed the definition of school property. I don't know what it was before, but they're talking about school property in this. Um, policy in the second paragraph. Like the third line down, for the purposes of this policy, school property shall include real property, physical plant and equipment, playgrounds, buses, vans. So I think they've expanded it beyond like just the school proper.
Mm hmm.
To include playgrounds, you know, what's outside the building and moving property.
Mm hmm.
Like the buses and the vans, um.
projected ground.
Think so, because that times when the district is responsible, providing for the safety. Just thinking about like the playgrounds off hours, if there's any implication.
Hmm.
Because, you know, lots of kids just go to the playground, like, yeah, yeah.
Right, and I think that that's part of the, you have insurance policies to provide us on that.
Yeah, okay, I love it.
So the supervision piece is the whole point of this one. Where is it set up, Byron, that's during?
So if the board is committed to train, students are appropriately supervised at times when the district is responsible, right?
Okay. That's interesting though, because what what does that mean?
Yeah.
Like. When is the district responsible?
I assume. Bell bell, but I don't know, like.
You could add something in there if you wanted to, to clarify that. This this shall, this shall mean that while school is in session.
And we're on the buses, I assume.
Yeah.
Which is. But there's like, um, there are those times, like the weekend or whatever, when people are just using the the school playgrounds, and those people might be students.
Right, but we don't want to.
We don't wanna supervise that, yeah.
But then, and we do bells to bell, then you have kids during like.
Yeah.
They have school activities that we probably assume they are being supervised, or do we? I don't know.
Yeah, do we have a definition of when the district is responsible for supervision, is it defined anywhere?
It might be defined in the insurance policy.
Yeah.
Um. Because like, you could even extend this to if you had an open house.
Mm hmm.
And after hours, so you're doing an open house at six thirty P M, you've got kids out on the playground.
Right.
How about where it says? Set the third paragraph without limiting the above, blah, 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 and then says of the school staff at all reasonable times.
I think that cleans it up.
Yeah.
Do you think so?
While they are in school or attending school-sponsored activities on and off school property.
Yeah, because if you take them on a trip to a museum and then trip down the stairs, you wanna make sure that they're cared for.
Mm hmm. So, well, I mean, I guess the question is legally is all reasonable times enough.
Yeah. I mean, it's pretty. Like, I mean, yeah.
Because that's what's reasonable.
Yeah, I think it's potentially maybe a little vague and, yeah.
I think that we must have writers on the insurance policies because we have the playgrounds, and I think that is. Assume that kids are gonna be kids, they're gonna play rough, things could happen, so I think that there's something specified in there.
Do you think that's enough?
I can check with, um, Brian, the business administrator about that. After the meeting, and just double check that we've got something in there, but I I would assume.
Yeah, I don't think that hurt, because I think playgrounds deal a lot of abuse after. And we don't wanna be. Do for something. Because there was nobody watching.
I mean, even the track too, with the baseball, you'd even fall on the track.
Okay.
Does that, that needs two readings, right? Looking into two fields.
Okay.
We have anything like that now, or is this a new policy?
This is new.
So that's not the new one?
Yes. It seems like we have this sort of built into other things, but.
And that's where you're gonna start seeing some of this peeling away and replacing.
Yeah.
Um, trying not to be redundant, clarifying things, it's it's, there's a lot, there was a lot in this spring update.
Yeah. Okay, so you'll confirm.
Yeah, I'll check with Brian on that.
Can we put it in the same night?
Yeah. Sneak in there. Uh, yes, it'll go to the night. So not making any changes to it.
Nope.
Okay, your next two pages, I have a little assistance. Uh, your next two pages, if you could, I just noticed, if you could pull those out. That's actually gonna go to J L C A.
Real time quality.
Yes. Sorry about that.
What was it?
Um, J L C A. Uh, our policy. And so, and then, um, the stack before it are also rescinded ones, so you can just put those aside. If you move forward to J L C A. Those random two pages go into my notes. Or sorry, as I fixed them. Sorry. It goes to the Community School Board Association policy, not policy. Those two pages. Our page is one. The school board should have three pages.
We're on J L C A.
L C A, and we're gonna fine cast the others, and I'll add those on to on next. To be determined to meeting.
Yes.
Sorry about that, you guys.
This one is on, in front of us, at the request of the nurses. Um. The. The School Board Association policy. Says that it's recommended, but we've already got it on the books, and one of the things that the nurses have been doing is trying to update their procedural. Operational manuals, um, to make sure that they're all sort of taking care of the things and nothing falls through the cracks. And so they brought this one up because the policy that we have. Is not as updated as the, well, they went looking at other districts and they saw that. School Board Association policy was up in other districts, and they liked it better. Um, because it talks specifically about how they needed to handle students who were conditionally enrolled, students who are facing homelessness. Um. And they really wanted just something that was. A little bit more. Clear. And had information especially about athletics, they were concerned about the athletics of life. So. That's why this one's been brought back in front of you.
And they're like, as it is.
They like it the way it is because they they really, they went and they looked at Dover's and they looked at somebody else's, and they had pretty much boilerplate what the School Board Association had. And they appreciated all of the specific conditions that were outlined in the policy.
Mm hmm.
Um, so they're hoping that this update can be made in our policy so that they can then. Find their procedures with it.
I agree, it's a little more comprehensive, um. The one thing, the only thing that I. Have an issue with was that the name of. The homeless students, which I would rather say. Students experiencing homelessness. I think that changed.
So that's in C?
Yep.
Who's the homeless liaison?
Yeah, we are. Which nobody's sure if people support.
Should we sit? Or is it?
I think in this case, because there are point people in each building, was Dan oversees everything, but each building has somebody to sort of do outreach. I think we could leave it this way.
I guess my only other thought on this one was whether. How it interacted with the policy we just approved about athletics.
In that one, it's made said they've been looking at, because they're looking at all the, the athletic piece is kind of what brought this to the top because of the way that. We've been needing to double check. Exams, you know, those kinds of things, and they're of the belief that this one will. Cover us better and align better with what we were already doing with athletics, especially since it speaks directly to it. And it calls it out specifically about what needs to happen.
Mm hmm.
Um. Yeah, they they've been very on top of what we're doing with policies, what what are we saying in this policy compared to another policy?
Policy also applies to the marching, the end of the high school.
They were also concerned about that, they wanted to make sure, because if you're. In a parade or you're, and it's, you've got heat exhaustion. You, can they treat them? How do they treat them? There were just a lot of questions about if this group is not included. What do we do in that case? And so that's another reason they wanted this, because it hits all of those kinds of. Situations that aren't covered anywhere specifically.
Mm hmm.
What about students participating in the play, the high school play? I mean, are they in danger?
It seems, oh, yes. Okay.
And I think that would be covered under. Another policy, and it's the next one that we're gonna cover though. Or. It's in a different policy, but it's after school's. Uh, activities, I think we just passed that policy, and I think it's covered in there, but they were concerned specifically, they did call out athletics and they did talk about marching band.
Hmm.
To make sure that we had a way to provide air and support, something like.
There are any reason we shouldn't include. I know, I mean, I feel like there is a lot of dancing and movement and. Exercise in the.
You climb up the fake stairs and it collapses.
Yeah. We could put that in, that's so.
Where is it from? Third paragraph, number sixteen, line number sixteen, fifteen and sixteen.
So you're looking at our current policy.
That's not numbered.
Uh.
But I think it's still in there.
It's you. It's not in there at all? You ain't seen it.
Oh.
School board, I don't see it, it just refers to athletics.
Maybe the policy you're referencing for. Performing arts is probably might cover.
Wait, now where?
So this is, I don't, so it, this, that is definitely a change, it seems like in the past, we said to be in the marching band, you had to have a physical exam. The new policy does not say that.
Mm hmm.
So that is a change. Um, and. You, how you're mentioning a different policy around after school activities?
Which was, which was recently passed.
The J?
I think it would, I'm looking under J, so that would be student related and not.
They did, I don't think it specified physical examination beforehand, did it?
People say. Yes, yeah, it's.
If we, if we call it performing arts. That would be like choir and everything.
Mm hmm. I guess it's a little tricky to know if it's on the line.
Yeah. Um.
Because, for instance, my son did like the airsoft club at school, like, that's a very active one, so, but.
Well, the frizzy one, you know, they have a.
Yeah, and that's.
Ultimate fringe that has led it, or not, I don't know.
Ultimately, it's like.
And what they were talking about, so I pulled up the email from them, on this policy. The language refers to students participating on school athletic teams and intramural sports. They're they're questioning about interschoolastic athletics.
K J, maybe.
They're questioning, um. Do those students need to pass? Participa- a preparticipation physical prior to the beginning of the athletic career? And then they're not sure why the current policy has marching bands, but if that's in there. Do we need to also make sure that things like ski club?
Yeah.
Are in there?
I just thought of.
Right, and and then it said in the following sentence, thank you so much for your thoughts, we're trying to standardize our practice. Communicate to the various stakeholders, so it's it's like ski club, so if we're calling out one group, yeah. Do we call out all groups?
Which is why I appreciate it not being in here. Yeah. Because I know I don't wanna elaborate every possible.
On the other hand. I mean, something like ski boat, to me, you really wanna know if kids were physically prepared for that.
But that's also something that you don't wanna preclude them from participating, especially if it's just a social event.
True.
Where I'm going skiing, but. They go skiing and carry the boots and the skis, and then they carry the boots and the skis back to the lodge, and, you know, they're sitting there drinking cocoa the whole.
No, you're. I agree.
Okay, so.
I think, I mean, I know Ethan's in Markman, I'm trying to give weed incentive, if this is even like. Uh, administered.
And see, that's why they're trying to figure out what what are they chasing?
Yeah.
It's fair.
Did they still use the school nurse guidelines? Do you remember that?
Yeah, 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 with the school. Yes.
Book?
Yeah.
Do they still do that?
I think so, because they talk about their guidelines, they talk about. Um.
Probably put that before the board again, because it's been years.
They just wanna make sure, cause this is like a string of nineteen emails back and forth. Are we doing this? What do we need to cha- chase? I checked the certain, I checked this in a certain building, I don't check this in other, so I'll. It's like.
Yeah, so it does seem like it needs to be either. It's sort of like an all or nothing thing, like just interschoolastic athletics. Or.
Which is.
All the clubs.
Yeah, and then every time a new club comes, then, you know, be in there.
That might be extreme. So maybe, maybe that's a matter of then having like a. Disclosure that people sign or a disclaimer, I mean, that. That people sign when they join a club. Says. That they're fit to do it or something.
Yeah.
And that would be maybe under policy.
Well, and that could be including permission slips and things like that, because when you're committing to something like drama and you've got a plan. You're you're committing to, I will be there for every practice, I will memorize my lines, I will whatever. So that could be part of the permission slip, like you're participating.
I think if you wanted to, so J J A, which is the one we just did, or we looked at, which is actually very close birthday activities, and if you amended J J A. To mention some sort of physical examination, you would cover. The, we would blanket cover if you asked something you wanted to do, all of those things. See, I mean, and not necessarily would be the physical exam, but. To the point about like some sort of waiver or. That seems like the cleanest way to do it. If you wanted to cover those things that weren't. The athletic themes.
Yeah, I agree. Or we can put it. In this one.
But would that be policy versus procedure?
That's what I'm wondering.
I I don't, I don't have a strong opinion that we need to have marching band or anyone else like this.
And I'm worried about. The the expectations and the stresses will put on families and. Potentially preventing students from participating because they can't get something, but if we have. The permission slip to go on ski club to, like, that's, that's something that's. Parent knows that they're involved, that they're giving them permission, you understand that ski club involves ice, that drama club involves stairs.
Maybe it's recommending J J A say something to the effect, but maybe there's more procedures as well. Which is like, it's up to the minister of setting techniques for their activity to like set the standards for.
I think that's implied in J J A. Cause, yeah, cause the more. Expectations we put on it, like, not only are we. Stressing families, but I'm also worried about kids who. Wanna participate and if they can't get through all these hoops, are we preventing that? When some of them, like, this is why we're in schools, I wanna be in the drama. Production, I, that's why I'm coming to school.
Yeah. So. I think what I'm hearing you say is that you feel like J J A already does enough to.
Yeah. So we'll just. Stick with what's in the sample policy. There's the one change with the marching.
Take out the marching band.
There's no marching.
Marching band.
Oh, there's no marching, that's right. Now we're just changing homeless to students experiencing homelessness.
Yes. And so do you feel that this is a significant change? That we should do two readings?
I think you should do two readings.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, I see, it's it's a, sorry, it's, yeah, it's a a change in policy. I think it's a small change. I'm good with one.
Well. You mean the small changes, that wording change, or?
Well, the, it seems to me that the material change in policy is that it's. The marching band is not in there anymore. It seems like. Other things are just like a little bit more clear.
That's true, it's just starting.
Yeah.
Already has more.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Single.
Okay, I think we can do. Single.
Well, the next one is related. To the one we just did, and I kind of. And legal. This one here. So. With J R A. Looks at F R P O. And. One of the questions that the nurses had. Was about. Folks who. Would be involved in. Let's say you're a chaperone for the ski club, or you are a. Volunteer who is helping out with the track team. Um, and you are now pressed into service to help administer an EpiPen or there's something. What they're questioning is whether or not those people have the ability. And the right to do this. If they're just designated volunteers. Now, our designated volunteers go through a process where they go to background check. They're not paid, but we know that they're. Safe to be with students. So. They'll they'll be on the sidelines of the track club, and if something happens and it's kind of like, well, here, here's the EpiPen, take care of it, or here, here's. Here's the Band-Aid, take care of it. Can they as a designated volunteer do this? And so we reached out to legal to find out. And. School officials in J R A, if I can find where that is again. Should include. Designated volunteers, and so we really need to. Add that to the wording. If I can find school officials.
School, line number seventy-six.
Yep. Yep, right there. So. In that section, like between seventy-seven to eighty-one. Dean Edgar, who was one of the lawyers, said, we've got it in there specify. That designated volunteers. Are also considered school officials.
And you're talking about people, like you said, who's not on the background checks.
Yep.
There. So not just like a parent.
Exactly. This is somebody who, this is their thing. They're coming because they feel. Passionate about track club and they're gonna be there, and so they would be, as a designated volunteer. Determined to be a school official with a legitimate educational interest so that they can administer an EpiPen or. Any one of these sort of measures to take care of the student. So. I think in line eighty-one, we could add something like. Designated volunteers. Are included.
Could you just say school officials comma, including designated volunteers?
I like that better.
It's the which line, ninety?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
Oh, seventy-seven.
Official comma.
Including.
Including designated volunteers.
But can that designated volunteer access student records?
I know, I'm sort of confused.
I know, I thought this whole thing was about accessing student records.
But is it maybe about knowing?
It's knowing that.
They might need an EpiPen.
That's it. That's it. It's it's, so the record might be. Jane has. A bee allergy. They're not gonna be getting into the files. But the fact that the record has that she's got an allergy. I need to be able to use an EpiPen, so. And it says may access, not will.
Okay. And that doesn't make sense.
That's the opinion of legal that we put that in there?
Yep. Actually, I don't know that I would put it in seventy-seven. Maybe it's better in line seventy-nine. Legitimate education interest refers to school officials. Employees or designated volunteers who need to know information in a record to perform. I would almost put it there because. If I need, if I am with Jane and I need to know that she's got a bee allergy. Would be on a field trip as a designated volunteer.
I'm pushing. So we could just put in seventy-nine, school officials.
Employees.
Employees or volunteers.
Yeah. I think that makes sense.
And then their question is, do we call them designated volunteers or just volunteers?
There's there's a specific wording in one of our other policies and in state law. About what it designated volunteers, and it is that they have to go through the background check.
But like you said, what if you are just on a field trip and it's with a parent and?
Then your teacher would be towards that now.
Okay.
But it, but. The the concern was what if, because you think about like a track meet and you're all over the place. And if the coach is across the field and here she is stung and you. I can't do it. You're gonna go. Minutes count.
Yeah.
So. I just wanted that cleaned up.
Okay, so in seventy-nine, we're gonna put. School officials, employees. Or or designated.
Designated volunteers.
Okay.
Change on seventy-seven.
Nope.
That one. You know, when we're just editing our own.
Mm-hmm.
Right, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep our own.
And that one's paired with the one we just did. If you wanted to, that could also be a single read because. They're sort of.
That's the only change.
Apple, that's it.
Okay, are everyone okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I have a unrelated question, but. All of the. So directory information, this is sort of just, this is sort of a curiosity from the districting stuff. So directory information is like the student's name, address, grade level. Some of the things. And it says, the school department may release or disclose student directory information without prior consent. Of the student's parents, eligible, slightly eligible students. However, they can, they provide the opportunity to give notice to the school, their refusal. Does that mean, um, like, at the beginning of the year or?
That seems sort of fuck the tree.
Well, just, it just, it's, it sounds like, well, it sounds like they can opt out, so you can't share their directory information. My question is, when do they opt out? Do they opt out at the beginning of the year?
A lot of parents who do this.
Yeah.
They do it right even before the year starts, not release. X Y Z.
Oh, okay.
It sort of comes along with the, um, every year they send out the paperwork about responsible use of technology and also the ability to photograph.
Yeah.
So it usually comes in there and parents will a lot of times write, please do not release any information about my child.
Right, okay.
To anybody.
So then if they don't do that, the districts just. Unilaterally can disseminate directory information about students.
Then a lot of times this comes as a, as a request, I think, like with the elementary level PTAs, they wanna know.
Remember back in the days, the phone book, right?
Well, you know, so and so live, what's their address, like I said, birthday invitations, all that, so.
Thank you.
Well, that's all we have.
Second guest, the end of the show. That's all we have for today.
Um, but we can pick a new date for next time. I'm hoping we could do through. The end of December.
Yes.
So that we've got the next four. Just as we're gonna be three oh six experts by then.
It goes to Wednesday? It's been. Wednesday eleven, the Wednesday eleven on.
Now, school board, oh, that's after.
Twenty.
Otherwise, I'm the walking, I'm a walking zombie.
About the twenty-fourth of September. That's a Wednesday.
They do that.
Okay. But we'll be done by one thirty, I've got it on the kiosk. Will be done, right?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we're under eleven, yeah, eleven, twelve thirty.
Give you time for lunch, Nancy.
Yeah. Have some lunch. Okay, in October.
Like the twenty-ninth, the twenty-second. The twenty-second is better for me.
Okay.
We do the twenty-second.
Yeah, I think that's more for me too.
September, I cannot do the September one.
Uh-oh.
Wait, wait, I can do it.
So September twenty-four, if I just sent the invite, what was the next one?
October twenty-second.
Okay. November. The fifth. I could do the fifth of the twelfth. I can't do the nineteenth. The twenty-sixth is Thanksgiving, well, the day before Thanksgiving. Is that too close to the? Twenty-second of October? I thought, what are you all?
I'm sorry, what did we say the other twelve?
We said the fifth of the twelfth. Let's go with the twelfth.
I think the twelfth is safer for me.
We're almost there, one more.
Don't talk about December, we're not there. I'm still wearing like crabs and lenses.
You're wearing this crabs.
Keep wearing this, you think they're three or seventeen?
I'm I'm fine with seventeen.
I'm fine with seventeen.
Okay.
Paul, are you gonna send all this to us, right?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna fly that our our choice for this, for September is during Rosh Hashanah. But presumably. That doesn't affect our committee, then we'll be okay unless there's something that's on the agenda, then. We might want to tend to it, so. Okay. All right, so we have the twenty-fourth of September. Twenty-second of October, the twelfth of November, and the seventeenth of December. Right, all from eleven to twelve thirty.
Okay.
Good work.
Amazing, okay, nice though. There, can we adjourn?
Yes, we can adjourn.
You're adjourned.
Okay, you'll get the, um, the one.